Good morning. This is the Deauville Miami Beach Grand Transformation. First planning, a board meeting in the city of Miami Beach to discuss what the developer is proposing and some reactions from both the board members as well as the members of the public.
...up to 400 feet. We've included the proposed modifications to the setback requirements on page six of the staff report. Other proposed amendments, which I'm sure the applicant will go through in detail, include modifications to the double encroachments, reduction in the off-street parking requirements, the allowance for subterranean parking and for mechanical parking without review by the planning board. Lastly, they're also requesting exemption from the requirements of the long-fronted standards. Now, in our staff report, we mentioned that we don't object to the concept of what's being proposed. We did have some concerns in terms of the level of detail that's been provided so far. We did note that there's some discrepancy in terms of what actual square footage of the Deauville site was previously. We have an application to the historic preservation work from 2013, which indicated that Deauville had approximately 309,000 square feet. The applicant's now indicating that there's approximately 500,000 square feet of, that was existing on the site prior to its demolition. So I do believe that we need to have more accurate, or accurate FAR drawings to establish what is the baseline of FAR for reconstruction in terms of the maximum bonus. We also believe that the massing study provided is inadequate with one simple accident metric drawing. We do believe that much more detailed information should be required consistent, similar to what we saw last month for 1250 West Avenue. We had more contextual renderings and elevations of the building in sight. We also believe that in terms of the long-fronted standards, those are put in place to have the long-term resiliency of a site, especially when you have a frontage here of, I think, around 500 feet. We do believe that those frontage standards should be contained, or at least we should have details to show which frontage items and which resiliency standards cannot be complied with. We do believe that additional information is required to support the tower setback on the south side. 50 feet is required now, the opposing 30 feet. We do believe that the board should be reviewing the footprint of those towers in conjunction with any sort of setbacks. And we do believe that since the site is vacant, there's some opportunity to push and pull in terms of the setbacks or the reconstructed portions. We are recommending that they provide at least one grade-level pedestrian access point to the beach. So we are recommending that the board review the proposal, take public comment, provide any recommendations. And we do think that the board should continue this application probably to the February meeting to provide the applicant more time to respond to comments today, as well as any comments that are provided at the public hearing, at the public workshop on December 17th. At a minimum, we would require any sort of updated plans to be provided no later than December 20th if the applicant was going to continue this application for the board to do in January. We'll now throw it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Hi, David Martin of 3310 Mary Street. Thank you so much for being here today and doing everything of what you do for a city. I'm really excited about what you guys are going to see today. I think, I think North Beach has so much, you know, opportunity. And I think this property is truly a vital piece of the revitalization of North Beach. And I'm excited to be working with Alan Schulman, local architect. That's really probably an expert for us on the reconstruction and replication of the Deauville Hotel. I think, you know, our firm really feels that's something that can be really positive for the city and the community, and also to celebrate our heritage. And also, we have Foster and Partners that are going to be also working with Alan on the project. So today, without further ado, just wanted to say hello, and I'll be here to answer any questions. And obviously, we have Michael and Nick here from Burke County, Dall, that can answer a lot of questions as well. But with that, I just wanted to get Alan to do a quick presentation. Thank you so much.
Pull up the presentation, please. Good morning. Alan Schulman with offices at 7300 Biscayne Boulevard. I'm very pleased to be here today on behalf of Tara and our team. And I'm going to start by telling you a little bit about the baseline of the project, which is the reconstruction of the hotel. And just to give you a sense of our team, David described my office. We've been in Miami for three decades, and our office is about 28 years old, working primarily in Miami Beach, but also in Miami and then a few other municipalities as well. Foster and Partners is a well-known, you probably already know them, so no need to describe. But starting with Norman Foster, they've really made a mark on the history of modern architecture globally. And it's great to be working with them. And our architect of record is ODP, a very professional firm that we've all worked with as a team before. So we're really excited about working together on this project. So I'm just going to start by, with the site, with the history. You all know this site, I know. But at the end of 67th Avenue, the Deauville really played an important part in the development of North Beach as a resort district and Collins Avenue as a resort corridor. And it fit in at one point with, you know, the Sherry-Frontin Act and with the Carolin and a number of other resort hotels. But it's also kind of an important placemaker in this particular part of Collins Avenue with its retail across the street and areas behind. It's a little different than the areas to the north and to the south. Just, you know, one of the interesting things about this site is the layered history. It's not like a single history, it's many histories. And that history begins with the McFadden-Deauville, which was built in 1926 as the first resort hotel in North Beach on this exact same site. And then, like before, the hotel celebrated its 30th birthday, it was demolished to make room for a whole new idea of resort hotels, which was the, which was the Deauville Resort and Hotel. The architect was Melvin Grossman, an architect who has done hundreds, maybe thousands of buildings in the Miami area, and a very important architect of resort hotels. You know, I won't go into the details, but like the components of it were really standard components for the post-war big resort hotel, like the fountain, the Eaton Rock, you know, etc., the Seville. You had the big pedestal, you had the tower, you had the big port cochere, you had the great lobby entrance, and all that is present here. And the hotel was kind of, it really presented a kind of a glamorous mid-century idea when it opened. And we're, you know, we are right now in the process of bringing that back and also reinterpreting it for the 21st century. So here, in this view, this kind of aerial view, you see one important, two other important aspects that you couldn't see from an up-frontal elevation. One is the size of the pedestal. You know, these pedestals were huge because they had all these ballrooms and, you know, theaters. And it's a landscape up there, and it was just an asphalt roof before. Our intention is to re-inhabit that pedestal for new uses. But also, this pedestal is kind of the starting point for new development that will happen on top of the pedestal, leaving the other element that you see here, the pool deck garden, to be free and open and to continue its role as a garden. Here, all the images that you see here, you know, the kind of iconic images of the Deauville will be reconstructed, the main entrance court with its, you know, parabolic port cochere, the very dramatic tower with its curtain walls and eyebrows, the pool and pool deck area, not the pool itself, but the pool deck area as an area of the building, you know, which more than most hotels of its type was kind of enclosed on the east end by this kind of screen wall of an oceanic deck, which provided some really iconic imagery. And the history of the Deauville, which is also really, let's, you know, face it, it's global history, John F. Kennedy, the Beatles, you know, etc. This will all be reinscribed into the history of the new building. We're basically meaning that history into the art and the storylines of the new building. So as David mentioned, and as Michael mentioned, the building had been demolished in 2022. It exists now, you know, basically in our collective memory. And the starting point of this project is the reconstruction of the Deauville. And here you see the, you know, all the same components of the Deauville will be reconstructed, the pedestal, the tower, the garden area, the port cochere, etc. And so here is a view of that, of that entry court and the port cochere. And you can see that, you know, we paid a lot of attention, a lot of detail to making it, to making it right, to making it authentic, and to bringing back that spirit of the post-war resort hotel. Now, on the inside, we're also taking the same, you know, approach to being very serious about the authentic recreation and redevelopment of these spaces. So here you see the original plan with all those really huge rooms. And basically, our approach is to basically adaptively reuse all of them. The lobby is basically being fully reconstructed. All the other rooms are being reconstructed, but with some new inventive touches that bring it into the spirit and usability of the 21st century, of 21st century requirements. Also, at the northeast corner, what you see in orange is a former back-of-house area. It was three stories of back-of-house with a stucco wall facing the beach. We propose to open that up with a new terrace. So when we're done, the ground, or the main floor of the Deauville will be a suite of great public spaces, really capital public spaces that will all connect with each other and will be sort of the, you know, the baseline for bringing in a first-class operator to this. And just to give you a sense of, you know, some very preliminary perspectives of some of these spaces, this is the grand stair leading from Collins Avenue pedestrian entrance up into the lobby. This is the lobby itself, which spans from Collins Avenue to the beachfront or to the garden, which you see on both sides, so it's kind of sandwiched in glass. This is the Casanova Room, which was a kind of a dinner theater. We're reinterpreting it as an atrium, it's being recreated, but reinterpreted as an atrium, green space that brings light down into what was otherwise a very dark, pedestal space. And then one of the really cool features of the building was this space called the Peacock Alley, which had this zigzag glass wall which looked down on the pool. And it is also being recreated, but with a new element, an atrium that comes in and again brings more light into the space. And with that, I'm going to pass to my colleagues, Ed Foster.
Oh, yes. Eric, is Eric here?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to give them another, what, ten or so?
Hello, can you hear me?
How would, how would you like me to set the timer? Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, you can go.
Thanks very much. So the site is bridged, bridges the gap between the beach and Collins Avenue. And of course, the beach was the reason for the creation of these resort hotels like the Deauville. But we've paid special attention to the public realm, to Collins Avenue. And we tried to tap into the transform city from what was there in the 50s to today and actually enhance it and provide spaces, quality public spaces for the pedestrian. Next, please. So you can see on this slide in orange, the historic public space towards Collins and the black line that defined the historic facade. And in the next slide, you can see how we are widening the sidewalk and effectively creating a new space, a plaza that goes beyond being a buffer from Collins, but a real public space of quality. Next, please. The, on this slide, we can see a photo from 1964 with a narrow sidewalk with the ballroom hovering over the sidewalk with a strip of retail facing Collins Avenue. And in the next slide, this is our idea of how we could transform this space, pushing the retail front back and allowing for a boulevard with shade and green to emerge with a very, very light presence of vehicular drop-off and activate it. And in the next slide, as we move into the space within the volume of the historic building now doubled in height, we use this not only as a spill-out for food and beverage and retail, but also as a way to solve the problem of raising the ground for resiliency. The next slide. In addition to this response to Collins, as a response to Commissioner Bott's suggestion and developed together with staff, we designed this concept for a south beach walk on the south side of the, or along the south boundary of the site. Next slide. From looking out from Collins, we thought, well, on top of this idea of connecting the two, the beach and Collins Avenue, could we turn this into a space that actually has its own value and adds to the, to the, to the sequence of the public realm? We could add, we could include art and history in the walk. The next slide. And as the path widens, we could create spaces for people to use, you know, for, for, there to be a cafe or a space for the community. And in the next slide, as we look now with our backs to the beach, looking, looking west, we can see that this, this path widens enough that it becomes an inviting access and connection to Collins with a life of its own. And we've tried to respond in a similar way. Alan, if you want to describe the north, the north path?
Sure. So, you know, again, Collins Avenue in this area is kind of known for its pretty narrow sidewalks. That intention of widening the sidewalks, widening the public realm, it continues all the way from the south to the north. So on the north side, just in the same way as we're doing the south side, we're kind of pulling the public realm into the building, into the ground floor. And this is also improving the resiliency of the building. And, and then another element of what's happening at this point is that staff also asked us for a second public accessway on the north side because the site is 500 feet long. So this is a complex maneuver because this, the north end is where we also have our service entry, our truck docks, our vehicular entry, etc. So we've come up with a plan to basically bring the public realm over the top of that. So we have the, we have a stair from that public plaza on the north side, which you see in orange there, that would go up, there'd also be an elevator, bring you up to this kind of high-line type structure that would travel across the north side of the building and down a grand stair on the east side to the ocean. So this basically creating a mirror to the south on the north side of the building and basically allowing circulation to run around. And the character of that would be trellis and green and public. And, you know, there could be a connection to the hotel. And then as you arrive on the ocean front back, as you come back to the beach walk, you would have a, this is the area where we reconnect with the beach walk, which is very close to the building here. And we've created a terrace in what used to be the back-of-house, the three-story back-of-house, which you see in the bottom-left photograph, you know, kind of a big solid wall, basically opened back up to create more public and private amenity, both. And then at the south end of the beach walk, you see the continuation of that oceanic deck, that terrace, that was a historic element of the building, but is now more perforated. And on the left-hand side, just to bring it back, you see the connection to the south beach accessway. Do you want to take it from here?
Excellent. So effectively, on all four sides, we have connected public realm. It connects with the existing public footpath, and it really creates a porosity at a urban level. Next, please. So we also looked at the center of the site, the main public open space of the site, that what used to be the pool deck. And in the next slide, we think there's an opportunity to bring in the ecology of the June into that space and create a real heart of the site, which is open to a wider, a wider audience. Next slide. So in this view of the historic pool deck, we can see a presence of hardscape, an absence of shade, and the architecture very much in the fall. We think that attitudes have changed. So in the next slide, you can see how this space could be transformed to bring in shade and bring in passive cooling and even, you know, extending the area of permeable floor, bring water down to the aquifer. So the next slide, the main addition to the site is the residential component. And in the next slide, you can see what it would mean to condense all that in a single volume. It became apparent very quickly that if we split the volume, as we showed in the next slide, we have a much more sympathetic result. In the next slide, as these two elements split, the gaps between, appear between them and the hotel, which are really very similar as the rhythm that you can see along this elevation from Collins Avenue. And the slimness of these towers really is much more in tune and sympathy with, with the rest of the buildings along, along the skyline. The next slide, this, this section from Collins Avenue to the water shows what the opportunity, or what this separation of the two towers actually brings to the pedestal. It brings the opportunity to bring daylight and, and debris through the building. In the next slide, you can see the arrival from Collins Avenue going into a courtyard, a green courtyard in the middle of the pedestal, what used to be the dark space of the ballroom, providing an access, a quiet access for residents. The next slide, the space shows this connection to the room above, which becomes a Napoleon Club, one of the suite of rooms of the hotel. And below gray, there'd be a drop-off for residents that is also daylight, as you can see in this slide, providing not only a really discreet arrival for residents, but also relieving the pressure from the ground floor arrival on Collins. The next slide. In order to achieve this, some structural gymnastics are required. Bringing all the columns to the main core of the building means we can respect the historic lobby, create this new club space, and really reduce the footprint of the towers on the historic pedestal, respecting the, you know, the contours of the original building and the relationship between the two. The next slide. And providing this idea of, providing this possibility for spaces in that, in that old, what used to be the border. The next slide. So now looking from the water, we can see, you know, this sequence of buildings along the skyline and the gaps between them. Think that the two additional elements really work in sympathy with the rest. I think that's, that's all over to you, Mike.
Hello. Great. So Michael, our team in South East King Boulevard, representing the applicant. So when you combine the obligation to reconstruct a historic hotel, and then you merge that with building two residential towers, and you try to travel under current zoning regulations, it's like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. It just doesn't work. So what we do is we create our own zoning district. It's an overlay zoning district. So the R and 3 zoning remains in place, and the R and 3 land use designation remains in place. But what you do is you create a brand-new zoning district. Here it's called the North Beach Oceanfront Overlay District. And this first slide is the comp plan ordinance. The comp plan is meant to be more broad in its nature of regulation. You have to put in there any difference in floor area. So here, we're asking for 400,000 square foot bonus to reconstruct the hotel. The comp plan ordinance also what regulates density. So we're reducing our density to 75 units per acre. We're also voluntarily agreeing to lower the hotel unit count to 280 units and reduce the accessory use square footage down to 35%. And then the HPB would, you know, be in charge of the substantial reconstruction. We have to get a COA for demolition design from the HPB. Next slide. So this is the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance is more detailed. If you travel down the left-hand side bullet, so it would authorize new ground floor addition, no more than 30 feet in height. The zoning code right now says the minimum driveway width has to be 22 feet. We're asking for 20 feet, we don't need 22 feet. And then in order to achieve our FAR and do the 400,000 square feet, we have a series of requirements that we have to meet. That's a bonus structure. We do that for a variety of reasons. But one reason is that if you, if you use a bonus structure for height and FAR, then any developer wanting to use the local act can't use your property as a precedent by which they can base their development program on. Because the way the local act is structured, if you use a bonus system to achieve your FAR in height, then it's unavailable to the local act developer. And again, we're asking for a height of 400 feet. We're modifying some of the setbacks, setback encroachments in order to actually reconstruct the Deauville Hotel. We're asking for a parking exemption for all the uses within the reconstructed building. This is no different. Right now, under the code, there are no parking requirements for any use within a historic building. We're asking that mechanical parking be approved on administrative basis. Next slide. And then with regard to the traffic study, as you all know, if we travel under current regulation, we could build almost 1,000 hotel rooms. So based upon the limitations we're seeking for our density and for our hotel unit count, actually on the weekends, which can be very busy in this stretch of Collins Avenue, we're having a reduction of vehicle trips to 379 on the weekend rush hour, which is approximately from four to eight when people are trying to get to dinner or go to Paul Harbor shops or whatnot. Next slide. So with regard to the community benefits, we're prohibiting short-term rentals within the residential towers. There's going to be tremendous economic benefits to the surrounding businesses that have been suffering since the Deauville Hotel was demolished. And we're providing our public access to each of the beach walk that Eduardo and Alan ably described. Next slide. And of course, when you reduce your density, reduce your hotel unit count, then every impact upon city infrastructure is reduced, starting with water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, our student population, potential, of course, goes down. And the demand in city recreational areas, of course, is reduced. Next slide. I don't know, David, if you want to...
Real quick, David Martin again. One of the big things about this project is there's different types of development. We have some that are higher impact, more density, and they maybe provide maybe less taxable value. In this case, this, this development would be a really low-impact, high-value. So when we look at that, the incremental tax revenue from this project is, is going to be significant. If we go to the next slide, maybe, you could just see here, two things. One, through the life of the CRA, the CRA, if obviously, hopefully, we're able to build, build this and move forward, we'll be able to contribute around, give or take, you know, the numbers around 300, over $300 million net to the CRA over the life of the North Beach CRA. And so a lot of our vision has been not only about our site, but we're also thinking about the rest of the district and how we could greenify the neighborhood, how we can make it more walkable, and really, you know, really thinking about Harding as well. So, so we really think that, that the incremental tax revenue, we probably will not be doing the 280. I think in our hopeful, you know, this is a long process, but, you know, we're targeting around 150 keys in our target program with the hospitality partners that we've been interviewing and working with. So it's actually going to be less density. And then our residential count will probably end up around 120 residential units. So just believe that this is a low-impact, low-traffic, low-infrastructure. And also, we're going to be investing in a lot of stormwater management, not only for our property, but we're going to be over-designing for the neighborhood. But anyways, just wanted to share that with you. Thank you so much.
And that's it, Mr. Chairman. We're happy to answer any questions.
Good timing. Okay. I just want to say preliminarily, the project looks beautiful. You've got a great team. David's a tremendous developer. You guys are all a great team. So I'm happy that team's been assembled, if we can work out the details. So with that, we're opening it for public comment. Are the people in chambers to speak on this? Well, sir, I'm going to, I'll look at you next. This lady's had already started coming up. And everyone that comes up, please identify yourself, introduce yourself with your address.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. My name is Sandra Cosola, and I live at 7451 Harding Avenue. My family and I, we've lived in North Beach for 32 years. And we also coincidentally lived in the Deauville for a period of time as well. And so when the Deauville disappeared, that neighborhood and area was greatly affected, including the local businesses that are still, unfortunately, affected by the Deauville not being there anymore. I, myself, when I pass by there and I see that vacant lot, I get a little sad and a little nostalgic. And I'm hopeful with this project. And I'm hopeful with this project that is being proposed because it would bring the daily foot traffic that I used to witness when I lived in that area. And also, it would greatly help the local businesses and local cafes and restaurants. And it would bring back families that would go to the beach and go to these local businesses and cafes and restaurants. And it would revitalize the area again. Because when the Doville left, it was, you know, it's, that area is just missing something.
Were you happy with that presentation?
I was, I was. You know, it was great to hear that they're going to do certain things that are going to resemble the Doville, the former Doville. But also with new improvements to it, you know, that'll, you know, match. As obviously, you know, with, as the years gone by, you know, changes occur. So I'm very hopeful with this project. I really hope that it will bring back the energy that was lost when the Doville was demolished. You know, I, even when it was demolished that day, I, I couldn't bring myself to witness that. Because my family and I, when we lived there, we have some very nice memories of when we lived there and when we lived in that area. And so I hope with the board's help, this project will be approved and North Beach can move forward.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Ira Sussman, 6565 Collins Avenue. I'm here today with my brother and my father. My dad was in the Miami Beach Veterans Parade last week. And thank you very much. We're the owners of the Sherry Fratnak Hotel, which is the property just to the south of the Doville property. And we've been faithful stewards of that property for over 50 years. We support the redevelopment of the Doville property. We thought it was a beautiful presentation, I just saw it today, just like you did. And as you can appreciate, it's a large property. And as a vacant site, it does not have positive impact on our neighborhood. So we support David Martin and the development effort, and hopefully it'll be a success. We also want to encourage this board to take a more global view of the neighborhood of the North Beach Oceanfront Historic Resort District when considering this legislative proposal. The legislative proposal should ignore to the benefit of the historic hotels as well that are in that district, as well as to those that replicate significant elements of those historic hotels. One other thing I'd like to raise, we're planning to develop our Sherry property. And looking at the legislative proposal, as it was mentioned, the Doville is a very wide property. It's 500 foot wide. And there are issues about side yard setbacks. And we would appreciate that they could move as far away from us with their new towers as is feasible. So that, we saw in the presentation, they proposed one large tower, and then they divided that and moved the southerly tower closer to us. I was looking at the legislation, the proposed legislation, and it says on page 10, I have the November 8 version. It says, "An enclosed loading and/or raised public beach accessway may be set back zero feet from side property lines." Now, I don't know if this is the ultimate resolution of side yard setbacks, but it continues and says, "A raised public beach accessway or screened enclosure may be constructed up to 40 feet in height as measured from base flood elevation plus minimum preboard to the top of the railing." And it goes on to talk about other elements that could be in that district, in that area. So we would encourage that there be side yard setback and that they can't build a 40-foot structure right up to the property line. Having said all that and realizing that my time has expired, I just want to say that overall, we are supportive of David Martin's effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to your dad for your service. Okay, who's next?
Good morning. My name is Dominique Passos. I live next to the Doville site on 6067 Collins Avenue. And I'm a local real estate agent as well. And so I'm confident in this project we've discussed today. It's one we need, we need to continue to move forward. I think it makes this project so exciting and it complements really the character of North Beach. And it's a kind of project will bring a long-term value, attracting new buyers, renters, and businesses. And so I will, it will improve through the neighborhood. And I think this is important, what we need right now. And so the floor plan they propose and, and the height would fit beautifully into the neighborhood in this, in that site. And by preserving the Doville iconic charm, it will, it will, our neighborhood will benefit from the aesthetic and functions. And so Terra is leading this project. And they understand the history and purpose of the, the space of this project. So from increasing property value and to renew the energy of our neighborhood. So this project is exactly what North Beach will need. And so we hope the planning board will approve this project. And we look, we look, we look forward, we look for this exacting project and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Sherry Rubin, and I live at 1615 Pennsylvania Avenue. And just celebrated my sixth year of Miami Beach being my chosen home. But my love affair with Miami Beach began a long time ago. When I was a little kid and every single spring break, we came down from Milwaukee to Miami Beach. And my family spent lots of time at the Doville. And I have a lot of warm memories as do some other residents. So I'm extremely excited to, by this project and the wealth of opportunities that it brings to the North Beach community. Because I was a firsthand witness to the decline of that property. And it was so sad. And to see it become just a gaping ugly hole was, was really kind of heartbreaking, especially given the history of that iconic property. So in any case, having heard the presentation, I'm even more excited by the potential for amazing opportunities to build community and provide beautiful green spaces for families and residents of the beach. Because that's what I want to see. And having said that, I would also add and feel even more optimistic about this. I hope we can all work together to continue to increase accessible housing for many different types of families here on the beach. Because I believe with all my heart that adds to the vibrancy and attractiveness of this community. So I too hope that this project receives support going forward. And I'm very excited to see what the finished project is actually going to bring to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Janet Silverman. I live at 6899 Collins Avenue, which is the Carolawn, which is directly next door to this property. And I just want to say, first of all, I've been to a lot of these meetings where proposed development is on the table. And I've never seen one where there hasn't been somebody that came up and said, "We hate it, don't do it." So well done so far. We, Tara came and presented at the, at the Carolawn. And there were probably 150 people that attended, including many of my neighbors. And I just want to say that I've had discussions with a lot of my neighbors after that meeting that attended it. And basically, to a person, everybody is very supportive of this, at least who I've spoken to. Obviously, I haven't spoken to everybody. But the neighborhood really needs this project or a project to be done there. And I think this project with its rebuilding of the Doville in the way it's imagined is quite a tribute to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks. And if I understand, Michael, after this meeting, there's going to be a second public outreach meeting, right?
There's going to be, yes. A community, a community meeting on December 17th on 5:00 PM via Zoom.
Anyone else, sir?
Morning. My name is Guillermo Garcia Dunyon. I'm 6767 Collins Avenue, which is Sterling, which is the second property north of the Doville. And we're very glad, I am very glad, that the property is being developed. But there's only two things that I would request to be taken into consideration. Because I hear a lot of conversations saying, "We're replicating the Doville." There's a couple of things.
I think preserving more, yeah, part of it.
But I've heard replication of the Doville.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And as far as I'm concerned, that, I mean, the Doville, the way that it was located in the site, it was, I don't know what setbacks it had, if any, the tower, was almost at the boardwalk. But I hope that they respect the new setbacks required by the city. It affects our building and actually the building that's going to be, the hotel's going to be built next door. The fact that if they put the, the big tower all the way down to the boardwalk, or it's minimal setback, it affects the view for all the residents over there. So again, setback in the, at least on the east side, the rear of the property. I think it's very important. Secondly, if they're going to replicate the, the Doville, the north facade of the Doville was not a particularly pretty facade. It was just a wall with, with windows. It would be nice if they would consider maybe doing some applications of the north facade. So it's a little more attractive than the Doville used to be. That's all.
He's nodding, he said, "Yes." And I also encourage all of you to participate in these public meetings, so you'll get more information. But thank you. Appreciate your thoughts there, constructive criticism. Anyone else in chambers? Michael, is there a lot of people on Zoom?
We have six people on Zoom.
Okay.
Five.
Hi, Tom Richardson, 6450 Collins Avenue. I just want to say I'm president of our condo board. I'm a founding member of the Allison Park Neighborhood Association, which is the association from 63rd Street to 71st Street encompassing this project. And I'm also a member of the North Beach CRA. I'm here speaking on my own behalf, but I have a long history of being involved in North Beach and trying to improve it. Since I moved up there 10 years ago, I've been a reluctant activist trying to promote the revitalization of North Beach. There's an old saying that justice delayed is justice denied. And I have implied that to North Beach because it's been revitalization delayed is revitalization denied. It's been years and years and years of struggle to try to pull North Beach up. And I want to put this project into context of all of that. Going back to ocean terraces, which were over a decade waiting for that to be developed. The 72nd Street Community Center, which was approved a long time ago and looks like it will be denied and killed. We had the Town Center, which is still not had its first project, although it's very close to PCO. We had a previous project here that was voted down and delayed. This empty lot has left a psychic and a literal hole into all of North Beach. It's the center of the development. It not only is a spectacular project, and I applaud you guys because it's somehow you managed to make it way better for the community than what existed there before. The public-facing amenities from the beach walks and the cafes. And it'll have the best views of any hotel because it will see the ocean from the lobby. So it's really spectacular and will be amenity for anyone who lives in the area. Just to, just to be able to see it is great. It also is no longer a dead hole of retail on Collins Avenue that used to be where the Napoleon Ballroom was. And it was just a concrete block for the most part. So that's really fantastic. But the ripples do not just go, the, the effects of this are not just on the 67th Street Doville site. You saw the money that goes into the CRA. It will have wide and far-ranging benefits for every aspect of the community in North Beach. $350 million in benefits that go into the CRA. And the CRA needs funding for, it's, it's part of the mandate that it has, part of the money has to go to affordable housing. So people might say, "Well, it won't help me at all because I'll never go in there and have a cocktail at the Doville." But it will. It'll make the sidewalks better, it'll make the green space better, it'll make the affordable housing more efficient all throughout North Beach. Besides being a spectacular project, it will lift up all of North Beach, which has been delayed for years and years and years. Back to the original plan that was almost 25 years ago that Roger Abranson showed me one time. They've been trying for decades to fix this area up. This project will go a long way to doing that. And I support it, I hope you will support it and move it along so we're not delayed even further. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else in chambers? All right, let's go to Zoom.
Okay, the first person on Zoom is David Sexton.
Hi, this is David Sexton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the, I'm on the CRA board as well. I'm on the GeoBond, and I'm the president of the Normie Fountain Business Association. And that's really what I want to speak to today. We've talked about the Doville being demolished two years ago, but it closed seven years ago in 2017. And as a brick-and-mortar business owner and someone who leads brick-and-mortar business owners that are all mom-and-pop shops here, it was devastating to the North Beach economy. The, you know, the Doville brought in hundreds of people who were fresh to North Beach every day as hotel tenants. And they were discovering things, they were shopping in our, in our stores, they were frequenting our restaurants. And when it shut down, the, the ripple effects on the economy were devastating and we're still struggling with it. So as many people have pointed out, there's been a hole in our community for seven years now. And I think that this recreation of the Doville is, is the best scenario that I have seen thus far. And I, I love the idea of it coming back. I love the Doville. And I, I hope that this project moves forward.
Thank you. Thanks.
Our next caller is Gloria.
And Gloria, please say your full name if you like your glory. Yeah, my name is Gloria Masuera from 5750 Collins Avenue. And like the rest of my fellow residents, I'm very happy to express my excitement about this new project in, in North Beach. The renders are fantastic. And the benefit to the community of being able to access the beach from the property is, is something that we always wanted to have. The design is much softer impact than other potential development proposals. And I look forward to, you know, for this development to happen. So thank you very much. Great job in keeping a lot of the history alive and, and bringing something back to, to North Beach.
Thank you, Gloria.
Our next caller is initial DB.
Hi, my name is David Borg, resident, you hear me? My name is David Borg, residing at 6301 Collins Avenue. I lived in North Beach for about three years now and am in favor of this project. It will definitely help with retail, help with occupancy, reduce crime. I think two things is we have to make sure that not only does this developer benefit, but all developers and future developers in North Beach should benefit. Additionally, looking at the massing study that was provided, I think we just need a little bit more work to make sure that there's clear and obvious setbacks. So future developments aren't hindered. So future developments on hindered, um, light and use. So we don't turn into a, another semi-aisles, make sure that it's open and airy to all developers and other sites as well. Um, again, super supportive of this project. Very excited to see it happen. Thank you.
And again, I'm just encouraging everyone to participate in the, uh, community outreach. Thanks.
Next caller is Nicole Choa.
Hi, my name is Nicole Choa. My address is fourteen twenty-six Bay Road. Um, this Do- Dovu redevelopment, redevelopment is an exciting update, you know, to this location. The beach access that they're proposing is exactly what this community needs. And I'm looking forward and grateful that they're trying to engage with the community and give us what we want. Um, I hope you guys can support this project and vote to approve. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our last caller on Zoom is Jimmy's iPhone.
Jimmy's iPhone. I knew iPhones listened. I didn't know they could speak. Jimmy? Maybe you're on mute, Jim. Still there?
Yeah, Jimmy has his hand raised, but he's on mute.
Jim, we're going to give you five seconds to turn off mute. All right, we gotta move on. Anybody else?
Okay, Daniel, we're. Well, after Daniel, there's, uh, there's, um, somebody else now.
All right.
All right, thank you. Daniel Serrato with Miami Design Preservation League. I won't bore you all with the ten plus years that we've been involved with the Doville. Or the fact that fifteen years ago, the owners got approval to reconstruct and build a new tower at two hundred feet. We're not there. We're here today. Unfortunately, there's been a lack of leadership in that neighborhood with some of the property owners. And I wanted to thank the sustenance for the Sherry Bronton Act, who have actually maintained their property, unlike the owners of this current property. I also know the owners of Urbana are here as well. And so I do think that some thought needs to be given to, if we do this, what will be the impact on the rest of the community? The other thing is that we reviewed the project with Alan and the team, um, before we got the staff report. So I'm going to first talk about the concept of the reconstruction. We, uh, our advocacy committee met with the foster team and they even flew a model in from London. And it was really fun being with, uh, our experts and theirs, looking at all the different possibilities. Um, and so we had a threshold that we wanted to first decide, which is, do we believe that there's a public benefit in reconstructing the Doville? Because oftentimes historic buildings are reconstructed poorly and they don't really have, uh, the benefit that they should. But we felt that in reviewing all the details, that urbanistically, this new project was maybe even better than the original. Things like having the restaurant on the upper floor, you know, when the Doville was built originally, the, the back wall on the east was right on the ocean. So that was before the boardwalk. So there are many things, uh, the beach access on the north and the south is amazing. Um, there are so many good things about the project that we like. And so the committee did decide that they endorse the concept of the reconstruction of the Doville. Um, as far as a new tower, there, the proposal we saw is actually higher. And so they did take our, um, feedback into consideration and how the new towers are proposing for a hundred feet. We haven't yet reviewed though, this latest version and we're glad there's going to be public meetings about it. But we did recently find out in the staff report that there's a question of, I don't know if it's three hundred thousand square feet of, of how large a Doville actually is. And so we think that we really need to know that information in the future meetings. Because if the Doville is two hundred thousand square feet less, then that would mean the new buildings also go down. So I think, you know, we definitely want to get that correct information. That's obviously has seriously impacted the size of the towers and the setbacks. Um, so overall though, if you compare this to the prior owner, the prior developer who came and denied that it was historic. Now we're sitting at the table meeting with a local developer. I think we're in the right direction. So thank you.
Thanks, Daniel.
Okay, we have two callers. We have, uh, Jason Mamadi.
Jason?
Yes, hello? Yes, hi. My name is Jason Mamadi. Um, I'm currently owner of Norman's Tavern created at sixty-seven seventy Collins Avenue. And, uh, we're really looking forward for this project. I think it's bringing, it's going to bring some life to the area. For the past five years, it's been very, a little, it's been a little dark in the area. Another problem, another solution they're bringing, I think, is parking. Um, there's not much parking in the area. The project looks beautiful. There's beach access. I really, really hope you guys can go ahead and, uh, approve this. It's going to be a very, very big plus for our little North Beach area. I'm also a resident of the, of North Beach, so I would really want to see this moving forward.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
And that concludes our callers online. So I would suggest if nobody else is here, that the board, um, close the.
All right, we're going to, no one else in chambers, right? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Questions, comments? Sure. Um, first of all, I mean, we take kind of first proposal, second proposal. It seems like, you know, the first go around was just you all listening to all the public feedback so you can come in. And really kind of incorporate everything for hopefully a much more seamless process. I mean, really during the outreach, you hear about meeting with the associations, nearby community organizations. So hats off to you all. I think hopefully, you know, you've kind of done a lot of the groundwork on the front end so you don't deal with, again, hopefully the outcry on the back end. Incredible project. Loved your term greenify. Hope I can use that going forward. Uh, but I mean, it seems like really we've only heard two, two comments, right? How can we kind of include it going forward to create a real district, not just for one project, uh, and to work on the setbacks? So I guess I would ask whether it's you or, or David, what can we do to either A, work on the setbacks, both from beach kind of access and also the side setbacks? Um, and also what can we do, I guess it's a question for city staff to include this kind of, you know, whether it's the neighboring projects or, you know, call it a few blocks, whatever it might be, to really create a real district, um, to incentivize further development? So first question for you all.
Also second.
Amen to that. I'll make a motion. We could do quick. There you go.
What I don't want to see.
You know what? Sit down.
What I don't want to see is, you know, come back and come back and come back and just, you know, let's just cut to the chase. Tell us what, what we can do and let's.
Yeah, it's, I mean, honestly, this, this is a.
This is great.
This is a city redefining project and it's monumental. I mean, how often do you have a project with increased F A R, meaningful development, and there's so few people coming out? I mean, Danny was somewhat positive. Look at the smile on his face. I mean, this is crazy.
That was, that was amazing, really.
I almost fall out of my chair.
It's just, it's, it's a shame.
Honestly, it seems like there's two things. So let them answer. Go ahead.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, we could go and answer all your questions one by one. Or we could write them down, absorb them. When we come back in February, we could have everything, you know, in sequence. And I don't, cause we've been here now almost half, two hour. I don't want to soak up your whole day. So I want some direction.
Listen, I agree you're going to be coming back and you're going to have, there's a whole process outlined in here. So, yeah, I mean, I think what the goal here would be is to, is for the board to give you their thoughts and comments. And then you, you know, marinate on them, meet with the public and then happily come back with all the answers. That's correct. In other words, I'm sure there'll be other questions. If I were to make a motion out, I'd say pass it with a favorable recommendation with the goals of A, seeing how we can work on the setbacks. And also to include an entire district.
This is, this is.
Yeah, we're not voting today, right? I think so. Oh, okay. As I said, if I were to make a motion, that, that's, that's what it would be. Don't get nervous, Mike.
That, that, that's why this is more like informational today. So, I mean, I, I want to absorb all your questions and we'll come back with very precise answers for everything.
And, and I'd like to say something. Um, I don't know if it's of any concern to you, but, um, I ask for the following information. The Acoia, uh, is four hundred and sixty feet tall. It is super dense. It is had a four point five F A R. And the Carol on is four hundred feet tall. It had a four point five F A R. And at the time, the code allowed for six point oh. Um, a lot of the, you know, people in North Beach have, have waited and waited and waited. And we've gotten pushed back and voted down and voted, you know, all of these things. And, you know, at some point, you can't look at a hole in the ground anymore. You've got to, you've got to have thousands of jobs back. And that's what this will do for the area, for the businesses, for the, the, for all of North Beach. And I, I support this.
Anyone else?
I don't, I don't support the setback notifications.
Get ready for the motion.
I'll just say, um, you know, this is a unique property. I mean, it's not like any other property in the city. So, I mean, there's, there's definitely a, it warrants, you know, um, changing the L V Rs to do something there rather than just, you know, whatever, whatever could be allowed. But, you know, in your presentation, I mentioned this when we spoke before, I mean, I don't think anyone's against, uh, reconstructing the Doville. And you showed all the bells and whistles that have come with, but what you're really asking for today is, is a big, um, you know, an F A R increase, height increase and all that. In your presentation, you know, I think there was about ten seconds dedicated to showing the towers. So, you know, I concur with staff. We really want to see what's being proposed, you know, sidelines and, and all that, all that good stuff, setbacks and everything. We, we, you know, it's not only us. I think the neighborhood, the neighbors, um, would like to see that too. Um, so, you know, before I can take any position, I'd like to see all of that.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, accolades on the proposal as well. Um, urbanistically, I think it really does elevate the area. I remember the old Doville. And it was just a fine concrete wall along a large portion of Collins Avenue. It wasn't fun to walk by. And, uh, you know, a lot of people arrive to North Beach, uh, either it's Collins Avenue or it's the beach walk. And the two beach walk access paths that are proposed, I think will be a, a huge win as well for the neighborhood and for the businesses and people that are coming and going. It's, it's half a mile right now between sixty-fifth and sixty-ninth, which is the primary way to access the beach. Uh, so I think that's a, a big win. I've shared with you all, you know, some of my thoughts on the north walkway. Obviously working with the program and, and the loading, um, you know, it's conceptual right now, but I think, you know, it's, uh, the idea of having a north beach walk is something that should be preserved, even if it has to be elevated. Because what you're doing underneath is important. You're taking the trucks off the street and you're not blocking Collins Avenue. Uh, so that is definitely a, a big positive. Um, you know, I've spoken before about the term like defensive, defensive suffocation of, of areas. This is different, right? This is, you know, today, uh, it's nothing, first of all. Uh, in previous years, it was, you know, four hundred or so hotel rooms. Um, it's going to come back a, a, a nice mix of, of transient and, and residential. And I think that is important for the economic success. Uh, so, you know, again, we're just giving you feedback. I think it's definitely a step in the right direction. Appreciate that you've come down in height, you know, it's not, it's not going to be just a wall of four hundred to five hundred foot towers. You're at the lower, uh, lower end of that, that scale. So it gives you a slight varying, um, especially with the other properties along that area. So, uh, I think you're going in the right direction and hopefully you listen to the feedback from everyone else.
Um, again, echo what everybody else is saying about how, what a wonderful project it is. Um, you know, I, I have concern, I, I guess I'll, I'm looking forward to hearing more about parking requirements and the exemptions. I mean, not only is this, you know, a, a big hotel, but you have to also understand, I mean, I'm sure you do. But, uh, everybody has to understand that there's a huge convention center, you know, or, or ballroom element to it. And I'm sure the best events in the city will be hosted there, which comes with a lot of parking, parking needs. Um, and so, you know, given there's two residential buildings going up there, uh, a big hotel. Um, you know, I, I would like to know more about the plans for parking and why this exemption is absolutely needed. Um, especially nowadays with the robotic parking and everything like that. So, um, and, uh, and then the, the other thing that I mentioned to you all when I, when I met with you was, you know, I really would love to see some, you know, affordable housing or, uh, you know, market rate housing, uh, you know, workforce housing. Element to this. I mean, it seems like there's so much space here. We're giving you so much F A R. Um, you know, even if it is just, you know, some portion of the property as, you know, to get things going. But I think that we really need to start looking at these plans and these projects in our city. You know, that where we're giving these, you know, huge F A R increases, we really have to start thinking about, you know, where, you know, at some point, we need to start requiring some elements of, of workforce housing. Because these, these huge pieces of property get taken up, uh, by these beautiful developments. At some point, there's no area left. I mean, right now, there's no area left and we have a big blank canvas to not include workforce housing here. I think it's just, you know, short sighted and, and not looking toward, or forward for the future of the city.
Jonathan, the two hundred forty-four million dollars that's coming into the CRA is going to build workforce housing because it's required. It's not going to be on the beach fund, I don't think ever in this part of the city. But I do think that, that, um, having workforce housing is important and it is required by the CRA to contribute.
Right, okay. And, but my point being, I guess this is, you can have all the money in the world, but if you don't have any properties for workforce housing and nobody's going to be spending.
They are. That's the, the bar in Carlisle is going to be workforce housing.
How, how many, how many units?
We don't know yet, but it's going to, but it's going to be significant enough that it's going to, at least seventy-five, I think.
My, my, I, I get that and I think this is a great move, step forward. I just think, you know, the, instead of making major financial contributions to funds for future housing. I think we need to start thinking about in these projects, doing, you know, some areas of New York City, what they do where they require certain parts of buildings. Live by local, same concept, okay.
Um, there wasn't, wasn't there a parking, didn't we talk about parking? Can you address that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, real quick. There, there is a, a parking garage on sixty-seventh and, and so that garage, one of the, one of the public benefits are two. One obviously is to satisfy the parking requirements of the hotel a hundred percent. And, and two also, um, potentially having a portion of that parking be, uh, publicly accessible parking and public parking. So we're, we're studying that now and that'll be part of our proposal. Thank you.
Um, yeah, well, I think we're going to move on, but just one question. So after this public meeting, it's coming back to us. Do you want it to be in January or February?
Good question. So, you know, I don't object to Michael's recommendation for February, but I just wanted to be aware. We have to go to city commission for first meeting in February. And I don't, the date of this hearing in February is, what is it, February fourth?
February fourth.
City commission is February fifth, right? They changed it this recently, last few days.
No, the date, don't have the date.
How quickly do you get our recommendation?
Not, it's up to if the applicant can provide us with the information we requested in terms of the fair drawings and better massing studies and things like that. By December twentieth, then we're okay with continuing it to the January meeting.
We, we would prefer the additional time. I just want to make sure it didn't alter our schedule in a way that.
It's February third, actually.
Commission meeting?
Yeah.
So it's before our meeting?
Yeah.
So that wouldn't work.
Say that again?
That wouldn't work. The commission needs a date.
But there are two meetings in February. So the second meeting, let's see, is February twenty-sixth.
Okay, they do first reading then?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That works then.
And also I'd like to point out to the public, whoever's listening, that the next, uh, Zoom meeting, which will be open to the public, will be December seventeenth.
December seventeenth.
Okay, and that's going to be a Zoom meeting and everybody will be given that information. So I would encourage as many people as possible to Zoom in.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, back to your question. So provided that, um, your hearing is February fourth, we'll present you all, they'll be your transmittal hearing to the city commission. And then we can do first reading toward the end of February. We're totally fine with that.
Correct. Okay. Board okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Tom? I don't know if you wanted to say something.
Thank you for coming.
I saw you get up, sorry.
Now he objects.
No, it's, uh, it's, it's a tight deadline. So to meet the manager's print deadline for February twenty-sixth, we likely will have the memo done. So to meet the manager's print deadline for February twenty-sixth, we likely will have the memo done and then we'll update the commission on the action of the planning board at the February twenty-sixth meeting. So the timing will work for you for us to hear it on the fourth? Yeah, and there's also a meeting in March. And then that would allow for the second hearing and the adoption hearing would have to be in April.
We just wanna, you know, get it going.
All right, so then, nothing else for us to do, we'll schedule for February fourth?
We just have to motion to continue this to February fourth.
All right, motion to continue this to the February planning board meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, Elizabeth second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, guys, thanks. Great presentation. Dave, glad you're involved. All right, we're gonna take a ten minute lunch break and then we will be on to new applications.